So, going to start and what starts with the start?
Okay. We commission your story. Going through the policy over the last one and a half, I've noticed about six elements, relieve and pull on. And we're here today to try to get some guidance from you to make sure that what we intend to enforce, which is in the regulations right now, is okay, and if not, that we need to address the policy at some point relatively quickly. Again, the idea is to have continuity between practice and policy. So those six items are going to be block linked. There are discussion of data essentially boils down to crossroads. Inclusion or exclusion of roadway with temporary block coverage, if you want that, in other words, the design of the lot itself. Public improvements within subdivision, in basic terms, those are streets, roads. Advance of public utilities, this would be prevalence of public utilities during the planning process. Some proposed exceptions to tractor law splits and allowing the planning commission to do some granting of tractor law splits with certain criteria met. And minimum infrastructure requirements across accessory plants, which is to make sure that you have a unified plants in the middle of the matter when there's submitting plants for cross access. So moving forward in with our first item, it's going to be block length, intersection of street, and very plating. Currently, the regulations require a crossroad at 750 feet, or for cause, the director can allow a 1,200-foot crossstreet. The regulations typically, most regulations are going to be somewhere in the 1,000-feet range, surrounding areas in 2,500 for collectors, larger streets. In 2019, the V O C C provided a renovation of cul-de-sac line. In other words, there is no limit to how little a cul-de-sac can be. But as a product of that, people stopped putting in these prostrates now. I've read this particular regulation, there's no mention of prostrates or block length there. So my intention is to enforce the prostrate component at 750 or 1,200 feet. Unless I hear something differently today, that's the intent. What, some of the last subdivisions, all kind of 150 feet street, but we don't have the length of that street before they have a crossstreet.
There are a number of subdivisions that are right in that 750 to 1,000 linear feet, and that's pretty regular.
So this is a recent thing since 2019? Prior to that, this was enforced. So, all these cross-access easements, will this apply to cross-access easements? Well, in my opinion, no, because this is only for subdivision streets, in other words, public roads. That reveals the county standard. At some point, they could be, could be so. Right now, the policy doesn't reflect that, cross-access easements. But the impacts, if you don't, are primarily obviously connectivity between subdivisions. E M X, you know, emergency response, police fire, and that E M X. Is this, this is just in term seven, and this, what if this is, you've got a flat, and you've got a call to subdivision that's on already a county road? This will apply to not only the interior of the subdivision, but the interior of the subdivision.
Have you had any feedback from developers on this at all? And what's the?
And again, their interpretation of this has been that, you know, with the exclusion of cul-de-sac limits, no crossstreets were required. I went back through the YouTube videos, couldn't find a part of that in the discussion. And what I'm glad to witness is what the policy says, which is that 750, 1,200 feet. That was never pulled from the policy. And again, these are, in my view, these are very basic tenants. If you go to, I've laid out a couple of subdivisions here. One, this is a cluster subdivision taken from our comprehensive plan. You can see that there's an interconnection between that road, even though that road wraps around, there are two points in, two points out. So the idea there is that you have interconnectivity of the roadway within the subdivision regardless of what type of subdivision you put in. So why are these important? Well, as the slide says, they're the basic backbone of the development. What you see on the top slide is a large acre subdivision with a adequate street network. Okay, that's what it should look like. What you see on the bottom is an example of a subdivision that does not include cross-access, cross-streets. And these particular cul-de-sacs are in excess of 2,000 feet. So let's say you have a fire truck that goes in on that bottom cul-de-sac and gets the wrong address. You have to go all the way like out, all the way up, and try to access that alley. Again, in my view, these are basic components of any land. We have several dead roads in the county, too, that are going to have that problem also. So, I think we're going to be like about there. We're not going to have to put cul-de-sac, crossstreet on that.
So is the pushback on this, that like if you put, if you have a way out in the county, you have a development, like a Bear Lake or something, way out, and it's sort of set up like that, if you do a cross road, you're going to be just taking up people's land?
Well, I think that's part of the question. I think the other part of it is that it increases the development cost of the subdivision. Now, Bear Lake, if I'm, it's probably, it's a B U D, completely different animal than a standard plating process, like we see. So I think the advantage of the developers, they want to keep those costs down, you know, on any subdivision. But again, our customer is the end user, whoever buys the house, and that's who we're trying to protect. But that's the only pushback.
Well, it seems as you, I definitely see the southern part of the county where it's, we're going to have multiple tying together subdivisions. But in some parts of the county, it would be years and years and years and years before you would.
Well, we can't have one set over to one thing and one set over to another.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just pointing out the.
And staff needs to have that level of consistency.
So you're saying about putting roads in that aren't going to be used, but the county could.
Could be. Depends if they're cross-access easements or if they're.
Well, I consider this to apply to cross-access easements.
Well, that's true.
So this would just be, so the county will maintain the take down.
So, I'm just, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying that's the argument.
Well, but we need to be consistent in, you know.
But currently, we haven't been doing, we haven't been enforcing this.
For the last few, just for the last couple of years.
It's since 2019, right? Now, this, right, it's currently in the regulations, I'm not asking for change, I simply want to enforce it.
And I know that we talk about orderly development, you know, we talk about development and orderly development, and I think what John and Amy are trying to accomplish here is to allow for orderly development that allows for additional future development. You don't want to be too short sighted to where you allow a development that then blocks future development.
So, if we do have these cross-access easements on roads, they're not built to this standard, they want the county to take it over, and they're going to have to put in crossstreets. Well, that would be a discussion for the county to have at that particular time. We can certainly change or look at the cross-access easement policy, but as it stands today, if this is an applicable, the back.
And we do have cross-access easements as a discussion item later on, so if we maybe move on from this, if everybody understands what we're doing here, can move on to the.
So, raising the price for developers, I think that is concerning.
Well, again.
It's not my priority, my priority is to.
Good portion of the developers that are out there developing in towns, and they have costs in towns like Sanitier, Seward, Curbing Gutter, a lot more stone structure. Asking for, asking for a crossstreet business isn't that a line. It certainly wouldn't be a monumental impact. And so you feel for the future, if you set how you continue to grow, if people want to work on five percent, things that'll be sort of in my direction. There any other questions? Okay. Moving on to the next item, which is roadway inclusion or exclusion during the plating process. Really, this is a technical element. The way the, the way the regulation is right now, the lot design goes outside of the road route. So we've been recently getting subdivisions with that roadway being included in the area of the lot. You don't necessarily have an issue with larger lots, but two and a half acres, and one, it decreases the developable area of the lot, you know, substantially. So we're just looking for what do you want to see here? Do you want to stand with the regulation as it stands, outside the roadway? Or do you want to allow the roadway to include in the lot design? I thought the roadway was included in your acre. Only on the front part of the lot. The way the side lot reads, it has to be exclusive of the roadway, so it starts outside of the roadway. You may run into a situation where you have the minimal plot width is impacted. Well, I think you're going to count if it's a roof. You've got to run it on the side, you've got to run it on the front, I think you should count both. That way, people can just maintain it. A whole county can say, hey, you moved on the roadway, or your roadway, just like, see, in the cities, you've got to mow your, you've got to mow your roadway, can't let it grow up, or easily, whatever you call it. Typically, on the corner lots, they're on average about 15% bigger. And it's been my experience to accommodate this very thing. I haven't seen that in this little street, got your reason. So I would say there are probably a number, number of ways to address it. You know, maybe make that lot a little bit bigger, since you can accommodate, you know, that roadway.
So what are the challenges for not, for, what's the pros for including it versus the pros for not?
Well, I don't know that there is a pro for including it unless the, unless the lot is larger than the adjoining lots in subdivision. Again, the con there is that you decrease, substantially decrease the developable area of the lot by including the road route.
And what would it be decreased down to? So like, with it, you have how much acreage to develop on a, let's assume the smallest lot?
Roughly about 900 square feet would be the difference.
So, that calculates to what in?
In acreage.
Yeah, so right there, you're showing a lot there that references three quarters of an acre of developable area. What you mean by that is that's where homes or structures can be built, correct? Everything else would be setback. If you included the right of way, what does that expand to?
Well, if you included the right of way, it would be at 2.5.
This, this is including the right of way. 0.74 acres would be including the right of way in your lot depth and lot width calculations. If you exclude the right of way, yeah, 1.1 acres is the developable area on a 2.5 acre parcel. And so when you go down to one acre, it's even more drastic change.
Right. So the larger lots are not really concerned, but the small lots, two and a half, below the line. And again, the way the regulation reads currently, it's exclusive of the roadway. So if you don't want to, if you want to stay with it, we'll simply make that, make an administrative change there, right back to.
So the thing I'm worried about is, so the thing I'm worried about is, isn't there a legal aspect to this? Because the county only owns an easement for right of way, unless it's K dot right of way. So if you had a subdivision along K dot right of way, the state actually owns the right of way. But if it's not a state right of way, then the county only owns an easement. The adjacent property owner owns fees simple title to the center of the right of way.
That is correct.
So we've had these instances where a new planning zoning director came in and translated it differently, where we had these five acre tracks. So if you divide up, say, a 40 acre track with fives and tens, if you use the center of the right of way, it all works out just right. You've got fives and tens. But if you don't include the right of way, and we had a past zoning director that said those people had to buy a 30-foot strip in back of their five acre track to get a building permit, because he didn't translate.
The ratio?
Well, no, he just said that a five acre track minimum to build on didn't include the right of way. Well, it was originally platted to the center of the road. So we had about 30 or 40 of these 30-foot strips that were conveyed. The people had to go out and buy a 30-foot strip from the adjacent neighbor behind them to give them five acres, because the new interpretation was it did not include right of way. So are we getting to that problem?
Commissioner, I don't tend to refer that I'll speak for Mr. Jacobson, but as he said, this is really a policy decision on your part. The regulations read one way, it's been interpreted both ways, so we need to have some consistency and clarity on that. There are, of course, implications if you include the right of way, or however you interpret it, so as to reduce the buildable size of the lot. There are other considerations, such as road traffic safety, when you have setbacks, you do want to keep structures, quite frankly, from my perspective, as far away from the roads as possible. But again, the larger picture is it's a policy decision on your part.
And the way I look at it is, you own to the center of the road, so I think it should be included.
When roads are vacated, you get to the center of the road, it reverts back to you. The county only has an interest in the property, not a fee submitted to it.
Unless it's K dot.
That's the way I would see it, so.
And you say it's currently being interpreted both ways?
Currently, it's being interpreted that it's included in the lot design. That's not how the regulation reads. So, once I get clarification here, I will make the regulation reflect the way you have planned. So it sounds like you want to include that, and I will change the regulation.
Because otherwise, you get those 30-foot strips in the back of all these five acre tracks continuing.
So you think is legal counsel, or is there? No, it's legal, and it's a policy decision. I think the attempt here is to come up with consistency in how these regulations are read and applied.
Right. And again, this is currently, interpretation may be different than what is written. So we're trying to get clarification on, either we're going to enforce it as written, or we're going to amend it to reflect what was intended. So if the board intended to include to the middle of the road, then we need to update the policy to reflect that.
So, considering his concerns that he brought up, as far as people have to find ways to make things work, is that a valid concern?
Yes.
What's the alternative argument to that?
I think that is an extreme interpretation by whoever made this interpretation. I would not probably have made that same one.
So you're saying it could have been maybe worked out internal?
Well, I think Mr. Jacobson's saying is that planning, the director at the time took, quite frankly, an unreasonable interpretation and enforced it, which led to those burdens in tracks that Commissioner Polis and reference. If it's the boards, I think Mark summed it up. Do you want to change the regulation to reflect what is currently being applied? And that is that it includes the right of way.
So we've got a five acre track, the five acres was to the center of the right of way. So this part here is right of way, but that makes that 4.9 acres. So what we had was a period there where they were making these people, since this is 60 feet wide, this is 30, half of that, they were making them go and buy 30 feet from the neighbors to make five acre tracks.
Just so I'm clear, when that plot went through, it was a easement for road purposes, correct?
They weren't platted, they were all just track line, all the ones I've seen.
But did the track start in the center of the road?
Yes.
Well, that's 330 by 660.
Yep.
And again, we don't, we don't necessarily have the issue of including it, we just need clarification. We don't have the policy to reflect this in the end. That's really all of these things. We don't all of a sudden want somebody to want five acre track that's three and a half. So that's the intent of the commission, we will do it next time.
And what I'm saying is, I think that follows the law, saying you own to the center of the road, feet type.
Yeah, and again, if it's a, if it's needful for road purposes, yeah, you definitely own to the center of the road.
Yeah, if it's not K dot, because K dot actually owns the right of way.
Right. Unless it's be simplified.
I know there was, and maybe it's not, maybe one part of this, but when we had the staffing on this, there was some concern about driveway spacing for the side lot. Does that impact it?
So.
And Public Works didn't be here today, both of them around the office.
Yeah. I mean, driveways are measured from the center of the roadway and the center of the driveway. So I believe at that time, they didn't feel that there was any major concern, but eventually there could be something come up, just because of the unique circumstances of that roadway. But that would be probably unique.
So it'd be the middle of the roadway? And I thought that's what they said, but I just want to make sure that we touch on that. So really, the main impact here is just where you can build within that piece of property. Including the right of way allows you to have a little bit more space to build, not including it, you shrink that space down. And the primary concern is on 2.5 acre lots. The larger lots are not the issue.
Yeah.
One acre is, yeah, we have so few lots, it's not really going to make a big difference. But again, continuity is the key.
As the setback on these, is it calculated from the back of the right of way, or from the center of the road?
We have two. We have the 105 feet, which is calculated from the center of the right of way, and then you have a 40 foot in most zoning districts that's measured from the edge of the right of way. So whichever is greater is usually the one enforced. Now, if it's like an internal subdivision road, then it would be the 40 feet from the edge of right of way. So it just depends on what roadway.
One thing to keep in mind, we intend to review all of these regulations on an annual basis before we review the comp plan. So we'll see these again, we won't piece meal these to you, we will, again, have an annual review. We have an opportunity to take a look at all that.
Hey, John, I have railroad ears. I've worked for the railroad in 27 years.
We intend to review the regulations on an annual basis, about the same time we do the comp plan, annual review, just to make sure that we're staying in tune with what your intent is, and make any changes we need to make at that time versus a piece meal approach.
And any changes today are obviously just suggestions, and we will bring them back for formal board review, but once we get some guidance. So on this particular one, it sounds like including the right of way and the lot ratios.
Will the planning commission look at these? Well, theoretically, it is a, it is a sounding for this change, so they would need to take a look at it first.
Do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, railroad ears, too. If you notice the next item, this has to do with public improvements, which basically means this, that if you have a street that you platted in a subdivision, I intend to make those as part of the public improvements in the subdivision, not for future roadways for future purposes, if it's platted, it needs to be built. That's the way the regulations read, and that's my intent, unless I told something different here today. And the reason you need to build those right up front and not save those down the road, you're asking someone else to build that road at some point, and likely, that someone is going to be in the county. So we're not going to convince developers to build off-site improvements and connect the road that you initially built.
I can tell you, since I've been here, there have been twice, that I can remember specifically, where that came up to me, that somebody came in that was platted for a road to connect to another subdivision that was right next to it, and the people who owned the lot, then were being required to build the road. And they're like, that's not even for our, that's not even our frontage, it's a side lot. So it is an issue. And again, there's a cost of development. And what we're saying is, this is part of a cost of that development, and that the current developer should be the one putting it in, so that a future developer next to it, or the county, doesn't, isn't on the board. And if you're not going to require that, then you probably shouldn't have the platter.
Talking about the one that banked one, Mr. Bill?
That was one, there was one other one.
So, again, the regulations to me are very clear, that it is platted, it is to be built, and would likely be included in the so used agreement or development agreement that pervert, you know, some.
All right. John, when you said you would require it, if that's the proper interpretation, does that mean withhold of building permits until the road is built?
Yes. Typically, you build improvements are not an issue until all the public improvements are sold and accepted.
Folks, I'll offer this, if you invite somebody to not spend their money, they will generally accept that invitation.
Was it in the past, wasn't there, you had to put up a bond or something, you had to rent it, build it? The act it is a way to get it done, the problem is, it takes some time at all, but unlikely it's not going to be enough to build the road. So, those construction costs can be a client issue. In my view, it's always in everybody's best interest to build the public.
When we staffed this, John and I had that conversation about, like in a city, what they do is, you have the idea of what the subdivision's going to look like, but they only then platen in sections as they develop, so they don't have to build a half a mile of road when they're only going to develop the first quarter mile to begin with. So that, you know, that, there's a way for the developers to do it that they, that is, doesn't prevent future development. It's expected in pretty much every place that you go.
Neighboring counties, is this kind of consistent?
Yeah, I'm not aware of a county that doesn't require the public improvements to be built as part of subdivision, and I'm not aware of. Okay, moving on to the water part of this same slide. Currently, the regulations require a bond to be issued to any water supply that is not public or part of a rural water district, so essentially what that means is, if you've got a subdivision that's on wells, it requires a bond be placed for water infrastructure at any time. That's the way the regulations read. I'm not aware of any, any bond ever being, ever being collected. Currently, the regulations require that go to the city engineer, or the county engineer. I would not recommend you do it that way. I think this probably needs to be looked at. Legal counsel needs to look at it and make a recommendation, I would think, on how you want to accomplish that, or if you want to accomplish that. But as it stands today, the concern here is that we have, we have water distribution out there, we have people that are simply getting a waiver, there is a portion of that grid that's not being built. So any development that occurs past that open spot, it's going to have to somehow get that infrastructure in place. So you need to, you need to tell me which way you want to approach that, by bond, or some of the rationale.
I think some of this language, when you run into it, it's because we've adopted a lot of what cities might do, talked about that a little bit, but we've held bonds on other things in the past, and we've refunded them after, I don't even remember how many years, but like three years ago, we went through the process, we made people put a bond on accessory dwelling units, and we held on to it for however many years, and we finally just got those all paid back after the board decided it wasn't a good thing. I think from the staff level, we, we didn't think it was a good idea to, for the county to hold bonds for a water district. So if it's going to be required, it either needs to go, in our opinion, to the water district, or this just needs to be something that the water district addresses as part of the development and not necessarily the county.
Mr. Shers, if I can, when you hold a bond, it transits some assurances, but all you're really doing is, quite frankly, deferring the accomplishment of the goal to some future point in time. And it begs for that bond to either lapse, or to continue to be held unnecessarily. Bottom line is, generally, it puts the development of that public utility at risk. So I, quite frankly, a bond can. So I, quite frankly, a bond can be useful, but it's, I would suggest it be the lesser preferred route.
Yeah. Remember a bunch of refunds going back to fire hydrants and collected in water district names and accounting out of the money.
Some for 15 overall years.
With interest. So if, so if it's a five acre subdivision, and our policy is five acres, you drill a well, does this apply to that? Okay. Go, I go to the BCA and they say no.
Well...
Don't want to bring up a bad feeling.
There would have to be five statutory criteria for the BCA to actually grant the variance. And convenience is not one of those five statutory criteria. That's the unique condition. Integrating the condition, it is not by definition unique. So it would be a hard sell.
Commissioners, with the addition of additional legal staff who's very, very well versed and very incompetent, we can work with John to come up with the appropriate regulatory language and try to avoid having gaps in public utilities that are created when you allow bonds.
Well, that's one thing to add. Isn't there some areas in this county that are not in a water district?
Yes.
There are some, yes. So how would that apply to one of them?
They can be, territories can be attached to rural water districts or public wholesale districts.
But it would have to be the surrounding water districts that have to...
Approve it. They'd have to agree to that.
So who will get the money then if there's not any water district?
Well, I think in that particular situation, they could come in and ask for an exception to that rule. Given that there's a, you know, it is possible, it's, you know, not going to happen very often, in which case, staff is going to...
Commissioner, as a practical matter, most of the areas that are not in rural water districts right now, we have that lie either in a stranger flood plain or are uniquely...
They've got underwater water there.
Uniquely un, well, drinking water. Uniquely undeveloped ground. And ground that is adjacent to a rural water district that is available to development can be attached to that rural water district. But we have, we have some there.
So what are the implications here, John?
Well, if we don't collect the bonds, which has been our practice so far, nothing changes. But we need to address the requirement of the regulations. If you want to start collecting those bonds, then I think legal counsel needs to review that and give us a vehicle by which to do that, or is that bond set? I, like Mark, am not a fan of collecting bonds, holding bonds. I would prefer, which we're going to go to the next slide, I would prefer that the developer and the water district work that out prior to whoever's submitting or planning here.
So if they can get a waiver from the water district, we're good.
I'm good.
If the water district says, no, you need to run the line, then that has to happen.
That procedure would probably cover what I was about to say, the flip side of that. Areas that are not in a water district, we have some areas that are in two water districts. So they're covered by two different water districts.
Well, that's a whole different topic, is the boundary lines. Of course, the rural water districts are fluid. I get it, water fluid. That sounds like a legal issue.
So what, so then here what you need is just that we would amend the current policy that says we will not collect bonds, and that the developer has to work it out with whatever.
And this is just for supplying water, not fire protection?
It's only referenced in the water section. So looking on to the next slide, which kind of tells you... Currently, PNC staff requests utility conveyance. I don't think that's a good idea. I've talked to the people, staff, they don't believe that's a good idea. In most places that develop, if you address that, has the developer part of it, whoever's submitting the application. You should have the discussions with the utility companies. The utility companies should review your plat, take a look at what they need, where they need it, the bonding elements that may be required, but public staff should never be involved in those sections. So it's my intent to make sure that the applicant is the one doing the utility conveyance during the platting process. So we're looking at something. Said, I said that the water district, their engineers sign on on it. Well, the idea there is that the engineers actually would be plating it, assessing what the improvements need to happen there. Or if we're in service, you know, the applicant here, they've got a comprehensive plan, they've got their whole, you know, they know how many meters they can add in certain areas and all that, that can add off to the district or... That's the way the regulations are. So I, you know, if it, the idea I think there is to encourage the engineers to look at it, not necessarily hold up the platting process if it's not.
Can these rural water districts go and do it? An engineer is not going to just jump right on it.
Well, again, I think...
They need one some month, the board needs one some month.
By pushing utility conveyance to the applicant, I think it's going to take care of a lot of these issues. Sometimes we don't even get responses back. We'll ask and ask, and again, we really don't have any skin in the game for it. That needs to, really needs to be the developer. So that's, that's the intent.
So is there something language wise, though? So you're saying it needs to be, the engineer needs to sign on. Commissioner Smith is saying that might be problematic for some of these water districts. Someone probably have an engineer on staff, someone probably don't. So is there, is there like a language in there that we can say that it's at the discretion of the water district? So if the, if the water district says, we're fine with not having an engineer review it, so would that be something that the board would support?
If you just put in a new eight inch line, and, you know, it's going to, why would you want something? I'm not talking about the internal streets, large subdivision, I'm not talking about anything like that. I'm talking about if you've got a piece of property, you've already done a lots laid on, and you want to add two or three more houses, then you've got to do a plat. That's all I'm talking about.
Well, again, I think the intent there is to, again, if the water district's actually working with the developers, I don't think we can do that. The reason I bring this to you is this is a change of practice.
Right. And again, the developer has to come to the water district and ask for service.
Yeah, that's, I'm just saying that instead of requiring it, have an engineer, that we just leave it at the discretion of the water district. So if the water district feels comfortable as a board approving it, fine. If they think their engineer needs to review it, that's on them, not us.
Then if there's a problem, it's a water district that has to upgrade.
Yeah, yeah, not us.
We can certainly make that minimum. Is that everybody's opinion?
Yeah. Okay.
So, moving to the next slide, which is track and lots split. First, what would be no lots split and track splits or administrative function or PNC? Unless something odd is there. If it meets the absolute requirements, then it can be administrative. If not, if it passed, the applicant has to push the platting property. What I intend to do is change the regulations so that the planning commission can review what you see on this bottom part of the slide, when you have off-camera block lines that would exclude an administrative approval. We'll send it to the planning commission, let them take a look at it, it would sit with them, if they approve or deny it, does not become for the board. But it allows the applicant and avenue to get the lots split done without having to go through the platting process. I've done this in other towns, and it works very, very well. And there's no reason to bring to the commission. I agree.
I agree.
Yeah. So we will still do it administratively, as long as they meet the exact criteria. If there's, if there's something drastic, how do you send it? Makes sense?
Would that have addressed the situation? I don't know if you've looked at that, the Bill Murr thing, would that have addressed that?
On the Murr, it would be up into interpretation. That line was somewhat drastic, so it might, we might have sent it on to the planning commission under these regulations. But if it had been just a minor, you know, angled lot, that was maybe, you know, 100 feet in length, then administratively, I think under these regulations, we would allow that we could have proved it.
So would you have, in your view, would you have sent that on to the board, the planning commission in that case?
Probably.
Okay.
And that way, again, there is another path for them to take. I'm happy to go through a full...
Voice plan.
Okay, moving on to the next one. This is minimum cross-axis easement plan requirements. And the intent here, and I've asked, I've asked public boards, and they have engineers to put this together. They haven't added anything. They are simply using the criteria there to create a checklist. The intent here is to have this checklist as part of the application process to make sure that the plans meet each and every one of these criteria, and that that one can be included in a finding back prior to the decision being rendered by the planning commission. So again, there's, there's nothing being added here. These are, these are what exists in the policy currently, but it's simply as a checklist so that we have a uniform symbol regardless of who's submitting across the board or across entities. So there's a way to clean it up and, you know, we can get a uniform symbol.
Did we deal with HOAs on these or anything? Often want to maintain this?
Well, we typically ask that question, and we ask for a 20-year time period, because the life of the road is typically 20 years. So that's what we have.
That's a good...
That's hopeful, yes. That 20 years would be, would be the lifespan. That's the intent, is to have whoever's performing the maintenance be solvent for that 20-year lifespan. And yes, we've had legal take what that forms that we've been submitted, last month and a half, and I don't...
Want to see these things?
I think there's always the, you know, Commissioner, you've obviously been around long enough that as commissions change, we can't guarantee that a future commission isn't going to take on someone else's problem, but we can, we can maintain that as a, from a staff level, we would not support that. If you, if you want your road to be accepted, we have a policy in place that says it must meet current county design guidelines. So they would have to bring it up to the Ashto standard for that type of road before the county would take it on. Now, any commission can...
Can say, hey, we're going to sub this.
Yes, they can do that. So actually, we can't guarantee, but we can say that the only way to avoid that particular thing is to make all developments build roads to the current Ashto standards for that roadway use.
So when we did cross...
I would do away with cross-access easements, by the way.
When we first did cross-access easements, we said that there would be a, something put on the deed or on the plat. Is that something that we, what's the practice now?
Do we know if, if the lot sells, it's on the deed that this is a private road?
So it's on the face of the plat, and typically, in my experience with cross-access easements, HOAs are being created, so that should be reflected in any deed worker title search that happens when that property sells. Now, the owner is the one who should be reading through that and understanding their responsibilities when they are buying that piece of property. But in regards to what we reviewed, yes, there is a, they actually put it on the face of plat that this is a cross-access easement, that, you know, it is a roadway that has to be maintained by the property owners within the subdivision. So, does that answer your question?
I can see it's confusing, because we have to put a street sign, a stop sign. And it looks like some of these are popping trees. I guess I can see where the buyer could get confused.
Commissioners, I don't want to interfere with your policy determinations, but I'll throw that invitation rule out again. You invite a developer to not have to spend money to build a road up to county standards, they will accept, they will take that invitation. My experience has been, over the time I've been here, the county always comes up and wants to help out the property owner, and it ends up being a subsidy to the developer. And it may be 20 years...
That's not what I'm addressing, that's perhaps...
It's really an invitation for a future problem.
But as far as my question, though, I haven't seen, how would you put it on a deed? I haven't seen a deed with any description on there saying this is on a cross-access and private piece of road.
It would be filed as a, it would be part of the time work, and you would have to actually read through it to know that it's...
But is that what we're typically, is that what we're doing now?
It's on the plat itself.
On the plat itself.
When the plat's filed, that, that language is on the face of the plat.
Right. But as far as the deed, when this person gets the deed, it doesn't say anything on there.
What typically will happen there is that they will have, they will have whatever caveats that they count on.
Like an easement. Yeah, like an easement.
They require the developers to put up a big billboard explaining all that as they drive in. Do not expect snow removal. Do not expect gravel. Do not expect any. And it was just a, you know, three or four houses, probably an issue, but when you get a large number of houses there, you got...
I think we have a vague description of how we prioritize roads and things like that on our website. We think have a little box that says, I mean, you know, this is...
Cross-access easements.
Do not or not. I mean, we could have that on our website that makes it very clear that that is policy and that we will not be maintaining those roads or clearing them of snow or whatever happens.
We have roads, we have roads like that already in the county system. They're called minimally maintained.
Right.
So we could require similar signage on, as you enter that subdivision. And I thought we talked about putting that, putting private road.
No county maintenance.
No county maintenance. So on the minimally maintained roads, they say, drive at your own risk, basically, so...
But I think what we think that on, because we have that area on the website, that that could just be a little thing. It's just like a note, so that it kind of makes people remember that, no, we're not going to go into your subdivision and remove the snow, that adds up to your association or operatives or your developers.
Can I talk about a blatant road?
I would, I would state that that's great, but very few people probably go look at the county website before they build their house or buy a house. So maybe the signage, when you enter one of those roadways, like we have to do for the minimally maintained roads, is that we require signage at the entrance of that road that says, this is a privately maintained roadway.
I agree.
And again, Public Works, which is going to accept the public signage, so...
So when we first discussed this cross-access easements, when we first were discussing it, I remember some of it was in terms of, remember the PUD downtown? And, and we have Bear Lake, they, they do a good job. But, but I remember, and I just put this on the table, I remember just couples that had talked about it, that we wanted at least that the roads on the cross-access easement be hard-surfaced, that that would be, maybe you're on up to county standards, but at Bear Lake, they at least are hard-surfacing their road, and that, that makes them put a little skin in the game.
A little narrow for county.
Well, you know, they're...
Yeah, no, no, they're fine.
But, but they're really good roads, and, and right, but we didn't require that. And so these are really, basically, they're rock roads. So if, if you were going to make a rule, say, if you're going to have a private road, you're going to at least have a, it may not be county standard, but it's at least going to be hard-surfaced. And I, I still think that's not a bad idea.
I think that, I think the conversation at the time was that you were making somewhat hard-surface a road that it dumped onto a county road.
They could, they, yeah, they could.
And, and so we went back and forth with that as, whatever road you connect to, that type of road surface is what is mandatory. You could always go more, but you had to do at least mandatory. I don't know that we even did that. I don't recall, I don't think we did.
But then, as years go by, we may upgrade the road out front, and it'd be hard-surfaced.
Right.
And it'd still be gravel.
Right. Or, yeah, it was, there's a long conversation.
I just don't want to see the taxpayers have to bail out somebody that cut a lot of corners and just put a road in and said, I'm selling the lots and see you later.
But if you've been to Bear Lake, excellent.
I think that the challenge is, is that you can refer to Bear Lake, but for every Bear Lake, there's, I won't mention any of the other subdivisions, but there's a, there's a plan out there that are more not.
For every Bear Lake, there's the rest of them.
So I think that the, the opportunity here is to either have this set of standards that we're, that Public Works is recommending, because, you know, we don't come up to, with solutions for problems... solutions for problems that don't exist. There is a problem that exists and that is that not everybody is submitting plans that are probably equal. So this is the bare minimum. This is the, now you have a checklist, you have to do these things, but we're not even going to look at it.
I agree.
So that's what this came up for. The alternative is that we just stop a line cross access easements and they have to build the roadway to county's, to county guidelines, which would be like an Ashto standard. So that, that's all we're bringing up here.
Well, at least what we did is protected, there's people that still own lots and morning deer that can't even get to the lots because the developer never put the road in period. So we protected that.
We're down for a while.
That's a dead end. Well, there's, there's a morning deer north. You're thinking of the one south that does have a road. The north one, they sold lots off of it and there's no road to get to the back lots. No one knows what I'm talking about.
Use a helicopter.
Yep.
So we need to do anything about.
Making a policy on the signage about.
Yeah.
What about the existing ones? Are we going to be able to just, the county just put the sign up in the existing right away that the road connects to, maybe as you enter?
We have the right to do that.
I think we should.
I think we should. It's going to save us a lot of time with staff receiving calls saying, hey, my road needs.
It, it helps our new road grader drivers too. Somebody who's not familiar with that territory, they don't want to head down somebody's private road.
Go in there and lay it all up. Yeah, you knock all rocks off.
And if there is a homeowner association, maybe the sign would say homeowner association.
That's a great idea, but don't put cross access easement on the sign.
Nobody knows what that is. You just say privately maintained.
Private road.
You don't necessarily want to say private road because then like the guy delivering vehicles and things, he can't drive down there, but you just say privately maintained roadway.
Okay.
Enter at your own risk, drive at your own risk. Basically it's like a little.
Risk comes. If you bought it, you're on risk.
Drive from anywhere.
Okay, so that concludes the presentation. However, we do have subdivision regulations that you guys had asked staff to go through and they went through, we're going to review some of that and this is the final draft. So everyone had a chance to look through that and look at the track changes? And if there are any questions, we'd entertain them. If not, then this is what we intend to do next.
I just have one question about that 105 foot setback and Amy talked about that earlier. Did we put in there, did we put in there that and/or 40 foot from the edge of the right away or is that?
So within the zoning districts of regulation, so each zoning district, it has its own standards. The 40 foot is referenced in that. And then in the additional height and lot limitations section, which is separate from the subdivision regulations, that talks about the 105 feet from the center line of the road. So it's referenced in two different locations, but it still applies to any structure being built.
Because there are sections out there that have a 300 plus foot right away. So 105 feet from the center of the road will still put you in the right away.
Right, so that's when the 40 foot from the edge of the right of way would have.
Okay.
So this likely will be one of the items that we bring up in January. Likely will be on the work agenda for a joint meeting with the PC. Items just like this, if you can work out, and then from that, we'll make the changes and reevaluate.
Did anybody ever figure out what the 105 foot came from? I.
I've been researching, I got back to like 1985.
It's kind of like a girlfriend's, you know, why has it been?
Why is the road that wide?
Did you ever figure out why it's only gave 1.5%?
Yep, I think it's like that, I think it's like that. Because I can't find anything that makes any sense.
Everybody got 35 standing out. Uh, no, not everybody got 35. I got a nickel.
What did I tell you? We're discussing right now and I don't know.
Okay, back on the dead end roads, that just applies to interior streets and subdivision, not the county road to dead ends.
Right.
Okay.
A pageant. There's a pageant.
What do you mean by inadequate right away?
Well, that's existing in the regulations, but inadequate right away to me would be 40 feet of right away would be 60, so that division is what it means. And I understand that you guys have had some discussions over how right away is to allocate it when you do that. I was part of parcellating that, kind of changed that in this, but that is, you know, what the determination is inadequate right away is.
That could be county portion. If it's an old county road, it's only got more.
There's some actors 20 feet in this. That's pretty common. In practice, when you plaid in that road, it ends up in the subdivision boundary as to the time that you allocate the additional right away. Well, that's normally how.
So going forward, do you anticipate having like a yearly review of, of all these things that's kind of in conjunction with all the other reviews?
Yeah, I think it's the best way to stay on top of policy. As we, you know, some of these going through the year, we put those down and say, that discussion, either one time.
So back to the right way, so if it is, somebody was wanting to build a house and there was only a 20 foot right away and you say you want 60, are you going to take the whole, the rest of it off of that property that wants to build a house and not off the other side of the road?
Logically, you would only.
Just take part of it?
Right, so the 60 feet, that would be like 30 from the circle.
Well, I've seen in the past where you took it on the property.
I've seen that too, I can explain to you.
I can't either.
But it won't happen that way.
Okay, just so that doesn't happen. Because then the person across the road, then you affect it at all.
Yep.
And then come back and vacate that at some point in the future. It goes to the.
Yeah. And fire response. What, what are we talking about on that? Available gas, electricity, water, close subdivision, fire response. Is that something you got to get from the fire department?
Yeah, these are the utility conveyances, that what we were talking about?
Right, so if the applicant needs to run it through, you'll pick the fire district or township and they need to provide a letter saying, okay, we see this, we can provide fire services to this area.
So are we going to not say they can't provide?
Well, what they may do is say we need a hydrant. We need fire force here, there, here, based on.
But if the water district can't put a fire hydrant in there.
They may be the case. But again, the applicant is the one who should be dealing with all those, with all those people.
Well, there's some water districts that will not put a fire hydrant anywhere, provide no fire protection.
I think that's pretty universally true in most rural water districts. I've not seen one that actually claims to have fire flows, but I think the intent there is to have a spot where the number can fill up once it's expelled all this.
So what, you got a fire chief that thinks, I don't like any development at all, I'm not going to sign off on this.
Well, he, he will submit a letter, but I'm sure he's going to, you know, put in the letter what he wants to say. And some of that's going to be standard stuff. I want a fire hydrant every, you know, we have to take a look at that and find what's reasonable.
Well, he, he's raising a real concern because some of our rural water districts, I think, are trying to use their ability to control lines to control development in their area. And I don't think that's a proper, so how do we, how do we make that fit with this regulation?
Well, again, I, I think that the pervades included of that has to rest with the applicant. I also think that we as a county are going to have to approach some of these, all of these water districts and do what we can to come to a workable solution. What that's going to be, I don't have where you hear.
We don't have any control of the water district.
We don't have any, we don't, we don't, but there's.
They weren't providing. Just a couple, but there are a couple.
Oh, you're right.
And there are some, there are some that are completely developed out that can provide insurance.
Close, yeah.
Without mentioning any substance ones, there are, there are water.
But most of them all have a comprehensive plan or five year plan or something, and they're doing that. And some of them like, if they have a development come in, it's got internal streets, absolutely, it's all engineers got fire protection and all that. But.
Some will have a two inch line and say, well, we're.
But some people, people don't, people can, if one live out in the county, you're going to have to give up some stuff.
Right, they may, that's kind of.
You're going to beg higher than sure, right.
I mean, that's very obvious when you have a letter that's, that's gone through the whole process and says, we will not protect you.
Yeah, that's still, that's just included when they make their application. We're just saying it's on them to go get it instead of our staff to go get that. If they get a letter from the fire chief that says, we don't recommend approval of this, it just goes in the packet for your consideration. Work still has the ability to review that. We're just not having staff go do it, which, which that's, that's good.
Not to have staff do that.
No, I understand that. No, I just don't want. It's just an issue.
It is.
It is an issue, but the, the issue doesn't fall back on us, it falls back on the fires or the water district, the fires, whoever it is, it goes back to those and they're talking, I think, or not.
We're talking a lot of water issues in the county. Some of them small, some of them large. We can go private water.
Right.
Well, we're going to do what we can to develop relationships there. We may not get any further than we are today, but we're assuming that's. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Really quickly, really quickly, utility connection plans, this basically says that if you have a lot, lot of tracks that 200 feet or a lot of, that you have to connect to, that's where they can only be applicable to heritage and references.
They're in that after.
Yeah. So we currently don't have any requirements.
We talked about it in the conference review this year, so.
Okay.
Thank you, very good.
Oh, that was just that.